Town meeting members, we're going to do a quick run on our clickers. All right, get your clickers out. We're going to just do a quick attendance. The real formal attendance is actually your signature at the town clerk's office's desk outside in the lobby. If you're here, click green. For yes. All right. All right, let's begin. The 2023 Fall Town Meeting, Night Two, will please come to order. Town meeting requiring 100 members for a quorum and having 113 do not leave. In attendance, I see there is sufficient number of members present to permit us to open the meeting, and I do so declare. Welcome to all, to all our town meeting members, welcome back. I hope you had a nice week and you have a nice long weekend. I also want to welcome them again, members of our town staff, members of boards and committees, town consultants and article presenters, as well as residents and other visitors who've all joined us tonight, here and also through WinCam, welcome one and all. I'm Heather Von Mary, your town meeting moderator. Please refer to me as Madam Moderator going forward this evening. I am joined by the town meeting staff, including the town clerk and the clerk of the meeting, who is to my right, and from your perspective to your left, Mary Ellen Lanin. Your moderator received a lot of gratitude that is appropriate to share to the meeting this evening on moving motion of 16 of Article Five and Article Six out of order. Thank you again for the meeting's flexibility in doing that. This evening, the agenda before us is to continue with Article Five, starting with motions eight. We will be taking them up based on their funding source, starting with the capital stabilization fund, and then moving to motions nineteen and twenty, the water and sewer retained earnings. Your moderator plans to break us about 8:00 PM, where we will go get some great snacks from the Girl Scouts. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve." You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject or your verb agree to serve. You don't have to know the second theory of thermodynamics and physics to serve. You only need a heart full of grace and a soul generated by love. Our government is founded in volunteerism. All branches of our local government is led by well over 200 volunteers, those who give the gift of their time and the love of our community in service. You can benefit and find some wonderful lifelong friendships in this space with people you would never have met anywhere else. And you can also learn so much about who you are and what really matters in this wild world we all live in. At this time, Winchester needs volunteers, and I'm hoping that if you're interested, that you will consider applying. This message is not only for town meeting members, but for our entire community at large. The positions that currently are looking for individuals to volunteer is the Archives Advisory Committee. As we always see here, a lot from the same committees at town meeting, I thought it would actually be appropriate to tell you what each one of these committees does, and maybe it might perk your interest. So, starting with Archives Advisory Committee, it is the Archives Center is who they support, and it's the home of the Winchester's historical documents, collecting and preserving materials that document all aspects of Winchester's history and the lives of its residents. It is a resource for anyone engaged in research into Winchester history. The center facilitates access to the information contained within the collections by keeping office hours, offering the services of a reference archivist to assist with questions and posting written histories, guides, and links for finding further information. That office is actually located in the lower level of Town Hall. The Audit Advisory Committee leads the annual audit processing by facilitating communications among the select board, the audit firm, and the management of the town. The Audit Advisory Committee makes recommendations to the select board relative to the selection of an audit firm, the scope of the engagement, and the implementation of the audit, and they're looking for two volunteers to fill their board out. The Board of Appeals hears and decides applications for special permits, petitions for variances from the terms of the zoning bylaws, site plan approvals as mandated by the zoning, and appeals from decisions of the zoning enforcement officer, who many refer to as our building commissioner. An alternate position is the one that is available, so it's not quite as demanding as a full-time Boards of Appeal member. The Cable Advisory Committee advises the select board about cable television services and contract issues. You'll get more direct communication with our very own WinCam if you take on that position. The Cultural Council establishes guidelines for use of local funding for art, and it determines if applications comply with those guidelines and awards the funding. They help make our town a beautiful place. If you like art, this is an excellent place for you to start volunteering for our community. The Personnel Board holds no other town office outside of town meeting and is a central authority for personal conditions, wage and salary adjustments, and job classifications. It assists in the coordination of collective bargaining activities with all the organized groups except the school staff. And you'll be hearing a report from them under Article 32. And thank you to our fellow town meeting member who stepped up so that they could have a quorum to present to you this evening. Finally, but in no way the least, the Retire Health Insurance Advisory Committee, who is responsible for the communications with town retirees, municipal officials, including the manager and many boards and committees, including this body, and communication with the town's professional health insurance advisories. Thank you to all the town meeting members and all of those who serve our community in volunteer roles. Winchester would not be the community we all move to and enjoy without your service. Before we get too deep into the business evening, I wanted us to make sure we take a pause and make sure that this body gives thanks to all of our current and past members of our community and town meeting members who have served our country. We are forever grateful for your service to our country, our community, and to us. As our reminder, Saturday at 10:15 AM, there will be a parade in our veterans' honor, along with civic exercises to follow outside of Town Hall at the Veterans Memorial. All are welcome. We will continue our meeting tradition at this time with a pledge of allegiance. For those members who would like to option to join me, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Let's begin the business before us. Moving to Article Five, motions eight through eighteen, not including sixteen, because we dealt with that on Monday. We will hear on the capital stabilization fund request, the Capital Planning Committee, on their behalf is Vice Chair Roger McPeak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Motion eight is for supplemental funding for the Washington Street Bridge repairs. This project was bid, and the bids came in substantially higher. We're asking for $116,000 additional to complete the repairs to the Washington Street Bridge. If you're not aware of where it is, you have a little bit of a map there. It's just past on Washington Street, going north toward Woburn, just past where the average on the cross is underneath. Article nine is implementation of the town's risk assessment that was conducted by the Chief of Police, looking at all the physical infrastructure across the town. And this first phase, you'll see, you'll hear many more phases in the future from us, focuses on Town Hall. This will include addition of outside, additional outside lighting, cameras, and key card systems. Our motion ten is for a DPW salter truck that has failed. It's failed inspection. And that's about all that really needs to be said. We need this for our road clearing and salting. And you might note that we do a lot to keep these things on the road, including some ad hoc modifications to keep them moving. Article, excuse me, motion eleven. There was a little bit of confusion on our part the other night. There's a question about where Lincoln fell in. We were not doing Lincoln under Article Six. We're doing it under Article Five. And so I think there's a little bit of confusion there. This is, again, another playground that we're looking to completely redo, remove all the equipment, redo the underlying surface, resilient surface for the kids. And also, at the same time, we're looking at doing work on VO's surface. Now, what's happened at VO, the picture's on the right, is water has infiltrated between the top layer and the resilient surface underneath. So, we're going to need to put in some drainage so that that doesn't recur, and then replace the top layer as well. Motion twelve is, again, mast dot dictated repairs that we have to do. They've noted deficiencies on the Shore Road Bridge. You can see in the circle where, in this one, it's obvious where, at least the first part of what got them going, water and ice has chewed away at the structure of the center column there. So, we're, this $100,000 that we're asking for is to do additional inspection, understand exactly what we have to do, and hopefully get through the engineering work and go out to bid. Similarly, a mast dot inspection revealed that we have problems with the Everett Avenue culvert, which, if you're like me, I'd driven over it many, many times and had never recognized that I was going over anything. But it's right there toward Cambridge Street on Everett Ave. And we're asking for $100,000 again to complete our inspection work and hopefully get through the engineering work and go out to bid in the follow-on town meeting. This one, we tried to get the building department manager a vehicle a couple of years ago, and we ran out of money. It subsequently failed, and he commandeered an old police department vehicle. And it has about 116,000 miles plus on it and gets about eight miles to the gallon. But, boy, he gets around town fast, let me tell you. So, we're asking $45,000 to, please, I mean, we're spending that much in gas. Motion fifteen is gin field lights. We'd like to replace the current high-intensity discharge lighting system that is there with LED systems that would also allow us to reduce the splash out of that area into the area neighborhoods. And we want a key component of this is also to eliminate the current key system where people draw a key, go in, turn it on, and hopefully when they leave, they turn it off. We want to put in a positive control system where it can be remotely activated. It can also be programmed to only be on at certain times. And that's a key component. I don't know if any of you heard, we're actually sort of probably very lucky over the weekend in one sense, and I'll get to that. We had, the system was vandalized. Someone actually was somehow foolish enough to go in and pull the meter from the hot electrical system, and they managed to get away without killing themselves. They also vandalized some of the equipment boxes that were down there. So, part of this, part of this will also be fixing the damage that was done, and $210,000. Motion seventeen is, we're asking for funding for a tabulation, a piece of tabulation equipment, optical scanner to read ballots. And this is in particular for those that are mail-in ballots, and this is a high-speed scanner. Now, the town has really taken to mail-in ballots, and we're approaching 50% of people are using the mail-in system. Now, that all has to happen in one centrally-located area, and they aren't opened until after the polls open on Election Day. So, you can imagine the backup that that creates. This allows us to stack, the town clerk to stack ballots up and process them in bulk. So, it's relatively important for us to do that, to comply with the Mass Voter Act of 2022. This is being brought to you by the town clerk, you know, the person that is watching your votes this evening. You know, the person that controls access to the transfer station stickers. You might want to be nice. It's a no-brainer for me, but... This one, McCall School Retrocommissioning of the HVAC System. This is a little bit difficult to explain, but if you think about it the way that we've talked about the ruse, McCall is not really one building. It's a collection of buildings that have been pushed together. And that collection of buildings all have their own sort of unique aspects of heating and cooling, and some of them have their own heating and cooling systems. And what we're doing here is taking a look at the entire structure, all of these systems, the new systems, the old systems, the modified systems, and making sure that they're all working as they're supposed to be working, and that they're all working together and not in opposition to each other. And it's also giving us an opportunity to look for what things we may be able to do for increased efficiencies and modifications to the system. $75,000 to allow us to take a comprehensive look at what McCall looks like today. And that's it for Capitol.
Thank you very much. May we hear a recommendation from the Select Board on Articles Eight through eighteen, not including sixteen?
Good evening, everyone. The Select Board unanimously voted favorable action on all of these motions, as you heard from me on Monday. Situation is the same, and we ask that you support these articles, these motions in their entirety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We heard from FinCom on Monday. On motions eight through eighteen, or you're going to go beyond that tonight?
No, I'm going to go one at a time.
Eight through eighteen, okay.
Five to eight, right?
Five to eight, yep. Yeah, Finance Committee voted favorable action. I received a number of requests for copies of the presentation we had given on Monday. And I'm sorry that that has not gotten out to you, but I tried to get that to happen. FinCom voted favorable action on Article Five, Motion Eight, which is the Washington Street Bridge repairs unanimously. This project is in flight. As Mr. McPeak mentioned, it's supplemental funding, and there's really no alternative. The funds are available, so this fits within the Finance Committee's regular criteria. Thank you.
So, did you want to go through the rest of them, or you want to, this is just eight? That's just eight?
I received so, I received a number of requests for information about what positions we had on each motion, so I was going to take them one at a time.
I'm asking for recommendations on all motions eight through eighteen at this time. Do you want to go through the rest of them? The recommendations are all coming in at once for eight through eighteen, but town meeting members are going to be taking them up individually.
Okay. I was not aware, Madam Moderator, that I would have prepared something which would have been like a sheet so people could know what FinCom thought about the various motions. I've gotten a lot of requests about what our position was, and if we do a bunch of them at once, it's hard for some people, you know, it's hard for people to follow.
Okay. Moving on to motion eight is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $116,000 from the capital stabilization fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for Washington Street Bridge repairs supplemental funding, including construction, engineering, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. This time, any town meeting members have any questions or comments? Seeing no one rise, we'll try. Oh, thank you. As we go through these motions, to go through them faster, if you could be so kind, knowing that we are going in order, to stand near the mics when you would like to speak, knowing you are interested on specific motions that are coming up.
Madam Moderator, through you to the proponents of this. The, there's a crosswalk right adjacent to this bridge. And on recent bridge projects, we have ended up going back and including a crosswalk in the project. So, I wanted to know if, when we do this, we obviously have a need there for a flashing crossing at that, at that crosswalk across Washington Street. Does this project include it?
To the proponent, can you please provide information regarding the crosswalk and if that will be part of the process for the bridge repairs?
I don't believe so, but I'd like to back up 10 yards and punt, just to be certain, to staff.
Okay. Staff, can you please provide town meeting regarding what will be occurring with the crosswalk at the Washington Street Bridge repairs? Mr. Matt Schuman, our town engineer, welcome.
So, this project, which was already bid, does not include any work at the crosswalk.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Can we make that an ad alternate or something and get jobs done that are immediately adjacent to each other and save the town some money in so doing?
Is there a possibility to town staff to merge jobs together for economy of scale?
So, the project has already been bid. There's been a low bidder who's been selected and has offered to honor their prices, provided that we get this additional funding. As we are over budget and already have a contractor involved, I don't think would it be possible to include it in the project.
Does the Capital Committee have anything also to add to that? Question? That's your understanding? If you did not hear, Capital Committee said that's also their understanding. Any other questions or comments? Oh. Mrs. Bauer? No? Mrs. Crowley?
How you doing? Meredith Crowley, Precinct One. I have a quick question. We just had a crosswalk put in with the repaving of the street by Eversource. Does that mean that crosswalk is coming out? There's a handicap ramp there?
To the engineer, could you please provide town meeting if the crosswalk near this bridge will be impacted for the construction?
It's my understanding that the work is related to the bridge structure itself and should not impact the adjacent handicap ramps.
Follow-up question?
Just a quick question. So, the current crosswalk and the handicap ramp won't be there, but there's no provision for a pedestrian crossing light? Is that what I? Okay. So, we have to request a pedestrian?
Yeah, so at this time, there is no pedestrian crosswalk light associated with the bridge repair. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, I believe you are ready for the vote. Let's work our clickers. Give us one minute while we get the voter ready. And this is motion number eight. Motion number eight is to decide whether we'd like to appropriate $116,000 from the capital stabilization fund for the Washington Street Bridge. A vote yes means you would like to appropriate that money. A vote no means you would not like to. A two-thirds vote is required on all motions one through eighteen on Article Five. Could have done a voice vote. 138 having voted. You never know, you know? You never, never know. 138 having voted, 92 required for the passing. 138 and the affirmative, zero in the negative, and the affirmative has it, and the motion passes. Moving on to motion number 10, it is moved and seconded that the town vote, I'm sorry, motion number nine, is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $150,000 from the capital stabilization fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for Phase One Risk Assessment Implementation, including construction, equipment, and engineering and all other costs incidental and related thereto. FinCom?
Motion number nine?
Mm-hmm.
Nope, this is it. No. Sorry. I have my cheat sheet. FinCom voted unanimously in favor of this motion, 12 to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from any town meeting members at this time? Seeing no one rise, let's try a voice vote. All those in favor of motion number nine of Article Five, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, and the motion is adopted. Motion number 10, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $270,000 from the capital stabilization fund established under Chapter 69, the Acts of 2002, for a DPW, also known as the Department of Public Works Dump Truck/Salter and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Any questions or comments from town meeting members? FinCom, may we have your recommendation?
Yes, Finance Committee, as shown on the screen, voted 12 to zero in favor unanimously. Our rationale is that the costs are known. There's an identified and available sources of funds. We had, there are some concerns. You know, people sometimes misunderstand that a 12-oh vote means that everyone is in lockstep on every single aspect. Here, I'm just sharing some of the concerns of FinCom members. There's no visible five-year program with a six-to-10-year lockout lookout on movable equipment in the town. Major, we believe major pieces of equipment should be on a rolling schedule for replacement at the end of their expected useful life. As I mentioned, we had a, we had at our October 24th hearing, which you can see online, a resident of the town recommends that many towns put a replacement cost fund in effect at 2% to 3% of the replacement cost of such equipment. So, those are some of the things that FinCom is thinking about, but we recommend unanimous approval of Motion Ten.
Any questions or comments on the dump truck salter? Seeing no one rise, I believe town meeting is ready for the vote. Do a voice vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimous. The motion is adopted. Motion number 11, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $400,000 from the capital stabilization fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for playground equipment and surfaces at the Lincoln School and the Vincent Owen School, including construction, equipment, and engineering and all other costs incidental and related thereto. FinCom, may we have your recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom voted 12 to zero in favor of this motion as well. The rationale is that there's an immediate clear need that needs to be addressed now. Again, I'll express some of the concerns. You know, as I said again, all of us don't think exactly alike on all things. There, again, there's, for playgrounds, there should be a, we believe, many members believe there should be a five-year program with a lookout of six to 10 years, so that our school playgrounds should be on a rotating schedule for replacement at the end of their useful life. The other, as I mentioned before, many towns and many other entities set aside a small percentage of the replacement cost as a built-in maintenance and repair fund in the operating budget. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from town meeting members? Please proceed.
Good evening. Jennifer Hayfley, Precinct Seven. Madam Moderator, through you to either Capital Planning or perhaps DPW. I'm curious, what type of surface is planned for this playground? Is it a rubber surface, and is there a possibility for a natural surface? And along with that, is it the same surface that failed before that's being replaced there? Thank you.
I believe that would go to the Department of Public Works. Could you please provide town meeting information regarding the surfaces that you are proposing under motion 11 for the playground equipment and surfaces? Well, it's just a surface we're talking about right now. Welcome, Mr. Lawson. Get the journey all the way to the front. Get the journey all the way to the front. I have a dream that one day someone will run and get the wave going.
Good evening, everyone. The actual materials haven't been selected yet. Once we start developing the plan for it, the place surface will be part of what's discussed. Most likely, what we are looking at for what we've priced is the hardscape rubber, but once we get this at each of the schools, I know for the equipment, there will be involvement of the PTA and the staff there, so nothing's designed yet. That will be the process after it's funded, but this is the price for your standard hardscape replacement and large permanent structure.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? All right, we'll try a voice vote on motion 11. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimous and motion 11 is adopted. Motion number 12, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $100,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for shore road bridge engineering and all other costs incidental and related thereto. We've heard from the select board, FinCom?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom voted 11 to 0 for, I'm sorry, 11 to 1 for unfavorable action on motion 12. The rationale is that it would be better to leave $100,000 in the capitalization stabilization fund for more effective or most effective use in the town manager's five-year capital plan, which we expect to receive in January of 2024. The part of that rationale is that when, when Select Board confirms the timing and the sources of the overrides that are in, that were described in a presentation by the town manager on October 30th, those overrides are between $20.5 million for high priority projects and $37.7 million for high priority and medium priority projects. So, we believe that this, these funds should not be committed yet until those plans are finalized and we can use this money to most, the best and most effective use. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from town meeting members on motion 12? Go ahead, Mrs. Bauer.
Hi, Casey Bauer, Precinct 8. Through you, Madam Moderator, to, actually, I would first ask if the, if FinCom has similar concerns about motion 13?
FinCom, do you have?
Because I have a question about.
Can you give some reason why? Because it would be out of order.
I have, I'm sorry. And the reason is that I have a question about this and motion 13, that's the same question, and it would make a difference to know what the, if, if there are similar concerns, if it's just, you don't have to tell me everything, but if it's similar concern. And as, maybe I'll just tell me my question. So, my question is, I understand from the capital presentation that there's some chance that we would not get all the way through bidding with the money that's been requested, and it seemed like if there was a chance that that would hold things up and end up costing more, that it would be smart to just add a little bit more to the request, knowing it would be turned back if it wasn't used. So, I wanted to inquire about the reason for the amount that was selected and if there's a chance that would be, cause a holdup if it wasn't enough.
To the Capital Planning Committee, can you please provide information if the amount funded and consideration of motion 12 is sufficient from your, the information you've gathered to meet the needs of the shore road bridge engineering?
Yes, it is our expectation that we'll get through to a bid package with this. The problem is, you always want to hedge. We're, until we get up underneath the bridge and we have engineers looking up underneath there, we can't absolutely guarantee that it will do it. I can't promise you that we couldn't possibly find ourselves in a position where we come back and ask for a little bit more money, but the amount of money that you see right now is with the expectation that we will get through the engineering and the bid package.
Did you have a follow-up question?
I guess, just for clarification, so if it turns out not to be enough, will that hold up proceeding until the next town meeting when you can ask for, say, another $15,000 or can you proceed some other way?
It depends on how much more it is. The town manager has available to her Chapter 90 funds, so if it was another $5,000 or something like that, she could choose to just allocate money in that fashion. If it came back and it was like, whoa, this is twice as big as we thought it was, which we don't believe that, given the information that we have right now, then we would have to come back and it would push it out further, yes.
Okay.
If it was a small amount of money, we could probably accommodate it.
Okay. I guess that, if that's true for both of them, then I guess I don't need to pester FinCom.
I'd be happy to ask.
I know you will in a minute, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Through you, Madam Moderator, to the proponents, I have two questions. One is the, about the concept of the bridge. We had a CBA study in 2016 that put out a concept of that bridge. It only had a sidewalk on one side, and I think it should have a sidewalk on, on both sides in order to support a contra-flow bike, bike lane through the, downshore road. And so, I want to understand what is the concept there? Secondly, I have photographs taken fairly recently of water within about an inch of the top of that bridge, you know, under one of the floods that we had. And so, my question is, is the capacity also going to be addressed in that, in that bridge?
Thank you. To our town engineer, can you please provide town meeting information regarding how extensive the concept engineering will be of this bridge to include potential additional sidewalk on both sides? And then also the capacity, will that also be looked at as part of this study?
So, to answer the first question, you know, to the extent that it would fit within the budget, that, that's something that we could look at. We haven't gotten a full, complete study of the bridge yet, so I can't completely say whether that would fit in the, it's not typically not part of what a bridge inspection and bridge repairs would include, but it's something we could look at if it fits within the budget of the money that's allocated. And in terms of the flooding, this is not really being inspected as part of a flood control program or a capacity analysis. In 2002, a third barrel to the, to the bridge was added as part of the, one of the flood control projects. So, and the rest of the flood control program has been based on the improvements that we've done, so it wouldn't include any additional flood control analysis as part of it.
Thank you. Further question?
Thank you. My name is Brian Vernalia, Precinct 4. I'm also a Finance Committee member, and I was the one favorable vote on that motion. I wanted to point out something as a Finance Committee member and then step back and talk as a town meeting member. As a Finance Committee member, I made a motion to, for favorable action on motion 12, and that failed 7 to 5. Subsequently, there was a motion for unfavorable action, and that was successful by 11 to 1. We have, so now I'm going to back up and talk as a town meeting member. We have a bridge that has deficiencies in it. We can start addressing them now or we can wait till June, and that's ultimately what we're looking at if we don't vote for this now. Waiting till January, we will not have funding in January. The funding won't happen until spring town meeting. So, I strongly suggest and urge that we vote yes. We don't want this bridge to suddenly have to close for whatever reason. We should be addressing this concern now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Carol Savage, Precinct 5. I support motion 12 for the engineering project, and I just have one comment to make. What I'm observing, and I may be wrong, is that we have two very hard-working boards, and we have the Select Board and we have our Finance Committee, and they're working on the same struggle, which is how do we plan long range for these major capital projects? And there may be an upcoming override. If there's a major upcoming override, I would strongly support that these two groups are talking to each other about this, because there are some questions and concerns that have been raised about how do we plan for the long term on this and what kind of override makes sense? And if one is going to come to the voters before the spring town meeting, I would hope there'd be some kind of mechanism where the Finance Committee could have some input on what that is, because I think Finance Committee advises town meeting on how we should be spending for the long term. So, I just, I'm just encouraging a little cooperation across the two boards, in whatever form that takes. And I know you're both working hard on the same problem, so I thank you both, and I just encourage that there's collaboration.
Thank you. Any further questions? Let's do this with a clicker, please. Please grab out your clicker. We're on motion number 12. This is to appropriate 100 and, was there another question? She can record your vote and add it in. So, we're looking at motion 12, shore road bridge engineering to appropriate $110,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund. If vote in the affirmative means that you would like to appropriate the $100,000 toward the shore road bridge engineering, a vote no means you would not like to do the shore road bridge engineering at this time. Requires a two-thirds vote? There are 104 in the affirmative, 37 in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is passed. Moving on to motion 14, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $45,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for a DPW manager vehicle and all, I skipped one. I didn't finish reading the motion, so we're going to go back.
I'm sorry. I just need to ask, Mr. Mellie, did your clicker register?
Uh, no. Oh, yes, it did.
It did.
Yeah, it did.
Everyone knows that.
Okay.
You can come up here and tell me your vote if you like, but it's by two-thirds, so I'm going to be like, okay, go ahead.
It is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $100,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for Everett Avenue Culvert Engineering and all other costs incidental and related thereto. The Select Board has recommended favorable action. Finance Committee?
Yeah, this isn't me. Matthew. Sorry. Great pictures, though.
It's one of those days.
Thank you.
Were you a PDF or PowerPoint?
I was a PDF. Finance Committee recommends unfavorable action on motion 13, and Mr. Vernalia described his vote, was the same on this, against, in favor of motion 13. The rationale against it is similar, it's the same as before, and I want to respond to the, to the question, the question that was directed to me. The, this is for the engineering funds. So, in every engineering construction project in the world, about 5% to 6% of the cost of the construction, initial construction is engineering. So, when you commit to spending $100,000, you're committing to spend 10, 11, sometimes 15 times as much money on the construction. And then that, together, is only 15% of the entire cost of having that facility. So, what FinCom, FinCom's concern about this motion is that without a five-year capital plan with sources and uses of funds, we are not yet sure of the priority that we would put as town meeting members. I'm a town meeting member, too. We're not sure of the priority we would put to projects that have implications 10 times, 11 times as much as this engineering expense. And until we see a plan that commits funds to pay for it, and where the money's coming from and where's it going, FinCom is concerned that this is too early. This is, we will spend $100,000 on an engineering plan that may be parked in a, in a space somewhere that never gets funded because town meeting doesn't vote the construction funds. So, it's too early. We think we, we're not opposed to fixing the culvert. We're not opposed to any of these projects at all, but this is out of sequence. We should have a plan with a commitment to fund it. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from town meeting members? Yep.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jason Roder, Precinct 5. I definitely do not want to get us into weeds, but this question, I think, builds on what was just said. I mentioned, I rise for this article, this motion because I live close to this spot. I feel like if this culvert was in my backyard, I could get the entire thing done for like $20,000, and we're talking about engineering, engineering for $100,000. So, my question is, I'm being serious, sorry. I'm getting confused. The $100,000 is a nice round number, but what does that actually get? Does that get an engineer that goes there for 100 hours at $1,000 an hour and produces a report? Or just a little bit of color to help town meeting members understand, is this a reasonable number? How does it relate to the comments that were just made about the ultimate cost of the project? Because I struggle with whether this number is, you know, you know, justifiable or not. Respect to Capital Committee, they probably have a great answer to this, so I just look forward to that. Thank you.
I actually am going to give it to the town engineer, because they actually have all the details of the cost for the engineering and what all is entailed inside that engineering cost. Town engineer?
Sure.
Could you please give town meeting information regarding what the $100,000 covers and what the town should expect to receive thereafter?
So, first, I'd just like to say that this culvert is so old, we don't seem to have any plans on it, so that's probably one of the reasons driving the cost. However, this, the scope of this work would get us a set of plans and bid documents suitable for public bidding to bring the bridge into a state of good repair. It would also include any environmental permitting or other incidental permitting required.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yep.
Madam Moderator, Chris Galetta, Precinct 6. This is a clarification question, I suppose, for maybe both Capital Planning and the Finance Committee. Understanding what the town engineer just said about the scope of the work and appreciating the need to have a long-term capital plan and funding sources related to it, is this kind of expenditure not necessary to understand what the long-run capital needs in a project like this would be and hence really requirement to be able to have the long-run plan that the Finance Committee is looking for?
For the Capital Planning Committee, could you please provide town meeting information on what capital planning feels that they need to give financial numbers for the actual work after the engineering? What, what is required?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, exactly. I mean, a lot of these engineering studies that, that we are proposing, we are, we are moving forward with so that we can give better scope of capital needs to the Select Board, who are going to be responsible for coming up for a plan to fund the construction of these aspects. They've, they've asked us to proceed with the engineering work, and they've promised us they will come up with a plan, and so that's why we're recommending these projects.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question outside? Okay. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Did you have a follow-up question for FinCom?
Well, Madam Moderator, I did address a question to both committees, I believe, so.
FinCom, can you please provide Town Meeting information on how this engineering report helps get information or does not get information to Town Meeting, to the Select Board?
Yes, Chris. Thank you. Thanks for the question.
Through the moderator?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
For directing the question to me. I used to teach this stuff at MIT in Construction Management Program. You know, I told you about how you break down construction costs. In engineering work, you typically spend 10% of your engineering costs on what's called schematic design. About 30% of your total engineering cost is what's called, you know, design development. The last 70% of the money you spend producing plans for bid is after you've made all the decisions which determine what the thing's gonna cost. It is the last 70 cents on that dollar that is spent making pretty pictures so that it can go out for a public bid. We are committing now to do all of that spending before we have a plan in place to fund the 10x, 20x construction costs. And FinCom is concerned about that. Thank you for the question, Madam Moderator.
Any further questions or comments from Town Meeting?
I'd just like to point out that we have substantially replaced, we replaced entirely one bridge on Swanton Street that was only 25, 26 years old. And also the one on Cross Street, we had to build a culvert because it was half the size it was supposed to be. So I think we should be careful about our planning for these bridges.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to our clickers to take a vote on Motion Number 13. A motion in favor will appropriate $100,000 for Everett Avenue Culvert Engineering. A vote no will not appropriate money for the engineering of the Everett Avenue Culvert. With 141 having voted, 87 in the affirmative, 54 in the negative, 94 required for adoption, the motion has failed. Moving on to Motion Number 14, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $45,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for a DPW manager vehicle and other costs incidental and related thereto. FinCom?
Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 unanimously in favor of Motion 14. The rationale is the same, it's constant. There's a known cost. The cost is completely known. There's identified and available sources of funds. And again, I mentioned before, this should be the subject of a rolling schedule for replacement. This should not be hard. And we just have concerns about that, but those are the rationales against this motion. Again, not everyone in FinCom is the same, but we did vote 12 to nothing in favor of this motion.
Any questions or comments? Yep.
Yes, hi, Madam Moderator. Martha Hoyt from Precinct 2. Question directed through you to, I'm not sure which group. The question is, do we have a designation or an idea what we will be replacing with? What kind of vehicle? And if so, who makes that decision and can we make sure it's an electric vehicle?
To Capital Planning Committee, can you please provide additional information regarding the replacement vehicle for the DPW manager's vehicle?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It will be certainly an energy-efficient vehicle. It'll at least be a hybrid. I'm not sure whether or not it will be an electric vehicle. We have, once the funds are appropriated, they'll have to take a look at what they can afford with that amount of money.
And when is that decision made or who makes it? Do you make that decision?
No, we do not make that decision. The DPW will make that decision about the vehicle itself.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Did you have a follow-up question or comment?
I'd like a question. Jeff Dean, Precinct 2. Through you, Madam Moderator, to probably a town official, perhaps the town manager. What determination do we have in the town for determining which town officials get vehicles and which don't and their official capacities in the town?
To the town manager, can you please provide Town Meeting more information about the fleet that our staff uses and how it's determined who receives a car vehicle for their use during their day and who does not?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So most of our DPW managers do have town vehicles. They are driving around on a daily basis around town and would not be appropriate for them to use their own personal vehicles. Engineering Department, for example, has one vehicle that's shared among staff. Board of Health, Building Department similarly. We have two EV vehicles shared between the Building Department and the Board of Health that are available to other staff when they're not being used by those departments. So DPW, I think, probably has the most vehicles, you know, per staff as needed. In addition to just the normal vehicle fleet, there are vehicles assigned to various managers in that department.
Thank you very much, manager. To the town manager, did you have a follow-up question?
Just a quick follow-up. It's probably on the back of her mind already. How many vehicles are in the fleet? The non-police, non-fire fleet for the town?
To the town manager, can you please provide how many cars are in the town's fleet? And this is outside the schools, I'm assuming.
So I would, for the DPW, I'd have to defer to the DPW director. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
I will redirect it. Thank you. To the Department of Public Works, could you please provide how many vehicles are in the town's fleet outside of the school district? This is Mr. Bob Bossier. Did I get it right?
Yes, you got it right. Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. I wish I had that answer for you available right now. I do not have that. I do have it back in my office, but off the top of my head, it's probably in the vicinity of 40 vehicles.
Thank you.
But a lot of that is used for snow and ice, so most of that is for snow and ice operations. I can tell you from my past experience, this town saves quite a lot of money by not hiring as many outside contractors as most other towns do. So even though it does sound like it's a lot of vehicles, we save it on the back end.
Thank you. When you get that number, if you would like to share it, you'll be welcome to on our next meeting. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no one rise, I believe you're ready for the vote. We'll try a voice vote first. If not, we'll go to our clicker if we don't get a unanimous vote. This is the vote to appropriate $45,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the DPW manager vehicle. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Please get out your clickers. And just as a reminder, the reason that we're gonna do our clickers versus me calling it because that was clearly a 2/3rds vote is because we had public who wanted to see the Town Meeting's votes on all of the capital planning articles. And the moderator's going to honor that request. A vote yes will appropriate $45,000 to the DPW manager vehicle. A vote no will not appropriate $45,000 to the DPW manager's vehicle. Having 148 voted, 99 required for adoption. There are 147 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and the affirmative has it and the motion has passed. Moved on to Motion 15, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $210,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the replacement of Ginfield lights, including construction, equipment, engineering, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. The Select Board has recommended favorable action. Finance Committee?
You can show me how to do that. I could do it.
Okay, that's kind of back.
Finance Committee voted unanimously in favorable action, 12 to 0. The rationale, again, is the same. There's an immediate, clear, the need is now. The cost is known, the total cost is known. There's identified and available sources of funds. And I won't go through the same concerns, but, you know, we are concerned that there be a five-year capital program that has a 6- to 10-year lookout. A lot of these playground devices and equipment don't last as long as a building. They should be on a regular schedule. This should not be standing up and surprising us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Town Meeting members?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the Capital Planning Committee, could you provide an estimate of the useful life of this new lighting system?
To the Department of Public Works? No? Oh, to the Rec Department. Ooh, you're getting redirected. To the Recreation Department, can you please provide the lifespan of the lights and the system that's being proposed under Motion 15?
Typically, the warranty on these type of lights are 20 years, but we know that they can last much longer than that.
You say the warranty? Thank you very much. Do you have a follow-up question?
Just one follow-up. As a comment, I think that information like that would be really good for Town Meeting as part of motions.
Thank you very much for that recommendation. Capital, got it? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no one rise, we'll try a voice vote. If not, we'll go back to the clicker. We are voting for $210,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the Ginfield lights. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Moving on, we already did Motion 16, so we're moving on to Motion 17. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $25,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the town clerk, central tabulization equipment, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Town Council would like me to restate that under Motion 15, that it was a unanimous vote in favor. The Select Board has recommended favorable action on Motion 17. Finance Committee?
Yeah, Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 unanimously. Again, the standards are the same. There's an immediate, clear need now. The cost is known. We have an identified and available source of funds. Mary Ellen does a great job. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none rise, let's do try a voice vote. All those in favor of Motion 17, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous has it and the motion passes. How was that?
What was that?
Unanimous.
Can we hear it? Okay, I'm sorry. Was it unanimous?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah.
Moving on to Motion 18. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $75,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the McCall School HVAC retro commissioning and all other costs incidental and related thereto. The Select Board has recommended favorable action. FinCom?
Yes, the position is the same. It's, we try to treat all these capital requests in the same way. There's an immediate need now. The need is clear. The cost is known and there's identified and available sources of funds. Oh, I'm sorry, this is 18. The rationale, again, we have the same concerns. Nope. Well, I don't have it. I must not be, I can look at my cheat sheet, though. My cheat sheet says--
If you're missing the banter, the Select Board's telling us unanimous.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments on the call? Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of Motion 18 to appropriate $75,000 to the McCall School HVAC retro commissioning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote in favor. We are now going to move on to Motion 19 and 20. We are going to have the Capital Planning Committee report on both of these at the same time, along with FinCom and the Select Board, and then we'll move to the motions individually as a meeting. On behalf of the Capital Planning Committee, Mr. Roger McPhee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. These next two motions are being funded through the water and sewer retained earnings. This first is to, Motion 19 is for a new dump truck. This will be a F-550. It'll be used as part of their daily basis and sort of replace this Bondo mobile that we've got going on up there that has substantial rust and is on its last legs. Motion 20 is a motion that's previously been voted by Town Meeting. And we went out to bid and the bids came in substantially higher. We're requesting $225,000 to actually accept the lowest bid that we've received. And this is, the flooding that you're looking at is right behind us. It's that area. And as I say, we've previously voted this. We just are looking for additional funds in order to complete the project.
Did you want to give Town Meeting information about the water and sewer retained earnings? That it's a different funding source than the previous motions?
Yes, it's, I'm sorry. It is coming from water and sewer retained earnings, not a stabilization fund.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Select Board on Movements 19 and 20?
Select Board unanimously voted favorable action on both Movements 19 and 20, excuse me. And I think a picture speaks a thousand words, so.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Finance Committee?
See if I can do this right this time. I'm sorry. With respect to Motion 19, the water and sewer dump truck, we voted unanimously in favorable action. Again, the standards are the same. Our concerns are the same. These things should not come as surprises. We should be funding them and anticipating them on a schedule, known schedule for five years with a 6- to 10-year lookout. The same, a similar outcome from FinCom, 12 members voting unanimously in favor. Again, we sometimes vote 12 to 0. It doesn't mean we all have exactly the same views, but this project is already in flight. Supplemental funding is required. The funds are available. Water and Sewer's an enterprise fund. They will make it up somehow, either in our water rates or in some fashion. So this is, we think, an easy vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $90,000 from water and sewer retained earnings for a dump truck, water and sewer department, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Any Town Meeting members with questions or comments on Motion Number 19? Seeing no one rise, take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. It is moved in second that the town vote to appropriate $225,000 from water and sewer retained earnings for Nelson Street Winchester High School Drainage Improvement supplemental funding, including construction, engineering, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Questions and comments from town meeting on motion number 20?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brian McCarthy, Precinct 4. This is supplemental request. How much was the original request?
To the Capital Planning Committee, can you provide information on the original financial request for the Nelson Street Winchester High School Drainage?
Yes, it's shocking. 220 was our initial estimate. So it did. It doubled. And that's the acceleration that we're seeing these days.
Follow-up question?
A follow-up statement, just, I think that would be helpful information in future presentations, that if we're making a supplemental request, we know what the original request was.
Thank you very much. Got it? All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no one else rise, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, let's do our clickers. We're going to vote motion 20, where it is appropriate $225,000 from water and sewer retained earnings for Nelson Street Winchester High School. A vote in the affirmative means that you would like to appropriate $225,000 for this cause. A vote no means you would not like to appropriate this amount. Motion 20 requires just a majority vote, as it is not coming out of the other funding sources. There are 144 in the affirmative, two in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. At this time, we are reaching just about 8 o'clock, and I promised the Girl Scouts that I would let you out near 8 o'clock to go get some snacks. So why don't we take a break now before we move on to our next? Precinct 8, you have a seat that is open if you would like to meet out in the cafeteria during the break to convene. Please reconvene. Everyone else, we're going to take a 15-minute break. Please do visit your Girl Scouts and buy some yummy treats, and we will see you back in 15 minutes at 8:00. 8:10. We'll round. Yeah, and then we will pick up with Article 7.
No, I'm sorry. I think you're in the mid...
No, you're fine. You don't pick at me. This is normal for me. It's always been this way. It's normal. People always change things at the last minute or something.
Just remember that, huh? Absolutely.
Do you intend to do a slide with every vote in the Finance Committee? Because this is taking...
Well, after Monday, I got that Tony email.
Good evening, everybody. Helen Ayden here for WinCam's coverage of the second session of Winchester's Fall Town Meeting. So we picked up tonight, first order of business tonight was a comments from the moderator on opportunities for volunteerism here in town, some of the committees that are looking for extra volunteers. Then we moved on to the rest of the work in capital planning, the capital planning report, and we started with where we left off on Monday night. The motion number eight was for Washington Street Bridge repairs. That was $116,000. That was additional funding because the bids came in higher than expected. Risk assessment study of hazards in town by the police chief, I understand, was for $150,000. That did pass. Item number 10 on the capital planning report was for a $270,000 DPW dump truck, a major piece of equipment. That passed. Item, motion number 11 was for playground equipment, new playground equipment at the Lincoln and VO schools for $400,000. That passed. Motion number 12 was for engineering on the Shore Road Bridge. $100,000 for that. Obviously, not some work, just engineering study on the bridge, the condition of the bridge. Again, a study for the culvert on Everett Ave for $100,000 failed. Not really sure why, but town meeting did not take kindly to that, that particular motion. Motion number 14 was for a $45,000 vehicle, a replacement vehicle for the DPW manager who is currently driving an old police cruiser with several hundred thousand miles on it and a gas guzzler. That passed. Motion 15 for a replacement of the lights at Ginfield with more energy-efficient LED lights with an expected life of 25 years. That was $210,000. That passed. Article 16, motion number 16 for engineering for the Packer Tennis Courts was actually voted on Monday, and that had passed. An appropriation of $25,000 for new tabulating equipment for the town clerk. The comments made were that many people are now voting by mail. Those mail-in ballots can't be opened until the polls open on Election Day, and it's cumbersome to try to tabulate them all during the day. So $25,000 for new tabulated equipment passed. $75,000 for a view of the HVAC systems at McCall Middle School. The comments were that there are actually several disparate buildings making up McCall. Some of them have old systems, some have newer systems, some of them are compatible. So I think this was to evaluate the systems overall for the school. That was $75,000. That passed. Moving on to motion number 19 was for a $90,000 new dump truck for the water and sewer department, which would be paid out of water and sewer revenues. And the last item was Article 20, item, excuse me, motion number, motion 20 into Article 5. That was for drainage improvements to the Winchester High School and Nelson Street area. That was also for additional funds because, you know, quotes came in higher than the estimates. So $225,000 for that, and that passed. One recurring theme through this discussion of capital planning came from the Finance Committee, who repeatedly said that they felt that some of these requests, like for vehicles and things, and replacements of items, should be on a multi-year plan so that they can be planned for. And that comment was made several times throughout this, that the Capital Planning, the Finance Committee, even though they approved, they thought that the items should have been seen coming. In other words, on capital, on a planned schedule, particularly for things like vehicles with a specified lifespan. Anyway, so we're, our second session of Fall Town Meeting here at Winchester High School is under, is in recess at the moment, and we'll be back in a few minutes with more coverage of tonight's town meeting, and I'll be back with a recap at the end.
WinCam is more like the public library. It's a resource for folks who live or work in Winchester. But instead of loaning out books or those types of resources, we're loaning out cameras. People see us at government meetings, like a town meeting or Select Board meeting, and they think that's sort of WinCam's role. But there's really a lot more to what we're covering and what we're documenting. For example, the high school sports that we cover. There's all kinds of community events that we not only document, but we normally will carry live, and we're actually archiving all of those, too. So the town's history is actually being recorded. In addition, WinCam is a great place to pick up some professional production skills at a reduced price. People are often really surprised when they come down and visit us for the first time. They're amazed at the facility itself and the resources that we're able to offer to residents. People are always like, "I can't believe I didn't know this was here." Well, access to media shouldn't be limited to those who can pay the high price, right? So that's what community media is all about. You should be able to come in and learn how to create your own media, and you should be able to turn on your television or your computer and access local information and entertainment. That's what WinCam does really well. That's what we're all about. That's the mission. And that's what public access in its core was set up to do from the very beginning.
WinCam is excited to let you know about a new course we're offering to Winchester residents. Introduction to Video Editing in Adobe Premiere Pro is an intensive five-session, one-on-one, or small-group course designed to provide a solid foundation in post-production. From file organization to color grading, we'll provide a comprehensive overview of the program, which has become the industry standard for video editing. Participants will learn by doing and leave having edited a polished scene. Premiere Pro is one of the top editing programs used by professionals, and since it's part of the Adobe Creative Cloud, Premiere integrates seamlessly with other industry-standard programs such as After Effects for visual effects and Audition for audio mixing and editing. WinCam will soon offer courses in other software programs so students can get an education that elsewhere would cost thousands of dollars. Our class is ideal for students interested in pursuing media as a career, adults looking to broaden their skill set, or anyone who's passionate about content creation and the visual arts. This class will be taught onsite at WinCam by our training and outreach coordinator, Kayla Avitabale.
Hi, I'm Kayla, and I'm excited to use my experience in video editing to help people in town learn these skills and bolster their media toolset. To learn more about how to sign up and course logistics, scan the QR code or visit wincam.org/adobe.
This course is offered year-round at $325 for all five sessions. Scholarships are also available for those in need of financial assistance. Finally, a year of membership to WinCam is included in the price of the course, giving you access to our state-of-the-art facilities and equipment.
We hope to see you here for this course. Soon, you'll be making videos just like this one.
So it's going to do the nail...
In order to keep up the level of sports coverage WinCam currently provides, we are in need of additional support. What does WinCam cover? WinCam broadcasts Winchester High School volleyball, football, basketball, hockey, and more. These games stream live on our website as well as on our cable channels. All games are then uploaded to YouTube for replay. If you're interested in sports broadcasting, camera operation, commentating, and more, email us at wincam@wincam.org to see how you can get involved. email us at wincam@wincam.org to see how you can get involved.
Town meeting members, please take your seats. Town meeting members, please take your seats. The gavel's gonna come out. Don't make me ask you three times. Thank you, town meeting. Welcome back from break. At this time, we'll be moving onward. Yes. Yes, please.
Colin Simpson from Precinct 5. I rise to request reconsideration of Motion 13 of Article 5.
We have a second. Can you say your name? I'm sorry. Can you say the name loud enough so the town clerk can hear it? Kayden Ferguson, Precinct 4.
Yes.
If you give me one second. So there's a motion on the floor to reconsider Motion 13 of Article 5? All right. And with that, for town meeting members who don't know, it can be made when a motion's not on the floor. There currently is no motion that has been read by the moderator. It is debatable. It requires a second. One has been received, and it requires a two-thirds vote to be moved. At this time, we allow the person who's making the motion to give their... Why they are making this motion.
Very briefly, the town engineer has said that we don't even have... This culvert is so old that we don't even have plans for it. And that we have... Without an engineering study, I'm not sure how anybody could find out how much this would cost. And even if it were too large to do under the current fundings that are being considered, at least we would know through that engineering study what kind of problems we have. And we must deal with the problems that we have or else they will be even more expensive. So for those reasons, I ask reconsideration of that. I don't think this came out, and I apologize if I didn't stand up and make this speech prior to the vote.
Do we have a recommendation from the select board?
Nope. I don't have any slides. The select board, the three of us that are at the table, just voted unanimously to support a motion to reconsider. Although we can appreciate the Finance Committee's position that we heard several times, we are working on that. But this is a bridge that's in disrepair. It needs... It's ancient by way of our standards. It needs engineering to figure out what we need to do to fix it. And like most bridge projects, it's a high probability that it will be funded under the Capital Stabilization Fund. And typically, the Capitol Committee, and I don't want to speak for them because they would have to consider it, but certainly, they consider safety projects as high priority. So I think this is a bridge that's been flagged by our internal investigation, and we need to fund engineering to figure out how bad the situation is and what a priority this bridge work is. Thank you.
Finance Committee, may we have your recommendation on the motion to reconsider? Okay, we'll give you a moment. Yes?
I thought Motion to Reconsider had to move to the first article of this next meeting.
We had Town Council review that. Actually, that's what we are just doing up here, to confirm that we are operating correctly. That's only when the motion to reconsider is made like the following day. If the motion was made on Monday, then yes, that would be the case. But it was made in the same session that we are in. As long as there is no other motion on the floor, which there wasn't because I hadn't started seven. FinCom, may we have your recommendation, please, on behalf of FinCom, Dr. Miller?
FinCom just had a vote... Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom just had a vote 13 to 1. I did not vote against reconsideration. Again, I would say that if the goal is to find out what needs to be done, that is not what the money asked is for. So I mean, if the goal is to do an engineering study to figure out what needs to be done, that would be a smaller and more judicious step. So we voted 13 to 1. I did not vote against reconsideration.
Capitol... Mr. Deering, is it okay if I have Capitol provide their recommendation on the motion or is there a point of order?
Well, it's a point of order.
Yep.
I believe in that one. Things are considered reconsiderable. It was always done... The truest part of business is the next meeting. Well, I don't think we're open to having a next meeting. Is this one thing? A lot of the business is the next meeting? Not right now, is it?
No, no, it comes right now. When we do that is when it's made outside of the same meeting. So if we close today, came back on Monday, and the motion happened, it then would be put at the end of the entire meeting. Mr. Johnson? I believe you're coming as the Chair of Capitol Planning Committee. May we have the recommendation of the Capitol Planning Committee?
Yes, Capitol Planning Committee, I believe, would like to have this reconsidered. One of the things when it comes to us, we evaluate the whole picture, even though sometimes we don't say it. There is no documentation in this property, which means it's gonna have to be surveyed. It's gonna have to be inspected. The state has already said it's inspected. It has a problem. We have to do our due diligence. This will do from the surveying right through bid documents. And another thing is, you want this like Lake Street. You want to have the road closed for an indefinite amount of time. What I mean by indefinite amount of time? If we're not ready to act on a bridge, it takes years. Takes six months to a year to go through the Capitol process. It takes another six months to do the engineering. And we look at engineering as a complete package. Engineering, we used to call architectural, bid specs, et cetera. But we just reduce that to all the engineering work. We're looking for a project that is ready to go out to bid. So if you don't want to wait a year or two, and if you don't use Everett Ave, that's one thing. But if you want to be considerate of your neighbors, if you want to be considerate of maybe yourself and not me, I think you should really think about this. We can't see everything, but we know something's wrong, and we know something's not right, and we don't want disaster. We don't want to create public safety issues when a fire department or a police department get a call and they can't respond because the road is closed. That means they have to go all the way around. If they gotta get out to Cambridge Street at the other end of Bacon Street, now they gotta go. If they're in Cambridge Street and they want to get to Bacon Street, now they gotta go down Church Street. So please, consider the whole picture and support the motion to amend. Thank you.
That is all the recommendations from the boards and committees on the motion to reconsider. Comments or questions from boards or from town meeting members, please?
My name is James Ferguson, Precinct 4. I think the Chairman of the Finance Committee is very clear on wanting a plan to finance all these projects before the engineering studies. But it seems to me that if I was trying to find a way to finance things, I would want to know the actual cost ahead of time. So I'm a little concerned about like, the Chairman of Finance Committee several times mentioned that it's an estimate if a certain percentage of the engineering costs relate... Turn into a larger-sized project. But it's not exact. If I were on the Board of Selectmen or the Capitol Committee, I would want to know what the actual cost was in order to find funding or appropriate funding for those projects. So in my opinion, having listened to both sides, it seems that we need the engineering study to see what the scope of these projects are, to find out what the costs would be. And then once we have the costs in mind, then we can prioritize which are most important and how to fund them. So I second the motion for reconsidering, and I hope you do as well.
Any questions or comments from town meeting members on the motion to reconsider? Yes?
George Snell, Precinct 2. Sort of a point of order.
That's okay. Yep, go ahead.
Between Bob Darian and myself, I mean, we probably have 80 years here. Eighty years I've been seeing motions to reconsider. It's not the way it works. Unless it's the last order of business, it's done the following... Unless that's the last meeting, it's done the next meeting. Now, I'm not saying that it has to be done that way. I'm saying it's the way we've always done.
Okay, one moment. At this point, I'm actually gonna ask the pleasure of the body to determine if you would like to take this up now or you want to defer it. So for town meeting, just quickly, I am asking you if you would like to address this now or wait and postpone it to a different time, which would be the first order of business at the next business meeting? Depending on how you determine and you interpret our legal, it can go either way in some ways. So that might be why the previous moderators took it to the way that they did. But it can go either way based on the interpretation. But I would just defer to the pleasure of the town meeting. All those in favor of taking up the motion to reconsider now, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. We'll continue. But thank you very much for pointing out tradition with the previous moderators.
Jeff Dean, Precinct 2. Madam Moderator, I rise to comment on this. Motions to reconsider are a fairly heavy and serious thing, and they tend to be predicated on new information being brought to the table. Not when a proponent or someone who also wants to advance this agenda supports it. There's no new information that's presented to this body at this time, and we would be setting a very dangerous precedent to be revoting every time a vote went the way that we didn't want. So I strongly encourage us on the principle of making a decision with the information that was available to not reconsider this vote. It's not a good use of our time. We have other important business. Let's get to work.
Wyatt, stop. We do not voice our opinions after people speak. Go ahead.
Sorry, Maureen Pimentel, Precinct 5. I'm just wondering if you can put the vote up so we can see what it was? Do we have that ability?
Yep, we can do that.
I had two clickers that weren't working, so Article 13 was 88 to 55 after recording manually.
Yep.
Madam Moderator, Megan Blackwell, Precinct 7. May I request a clicker vote on the motion to reconsider tonight?
Yeah, there'll be a clicker vote.
On the motion... You did a voice vote on whether or not we want to reconsider...
No, it's already been called.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Did you have a follow-up question?
I did, and I apologize for being ignorant. But was this a simple majority or two-thirds vote?
Two-thirds vote required.
So if 87 were voting, 54...
94 were required and clickers were not functioning during this vote. Yep. Yeah, there are clickers that were not working as well during this vote. All right. There's a move the vote. Do we have a second? All right, to move the vote requires a two-thirds vote. But at this time, I think it's actually out of order because there's no one in queue. So I'm just gonna go straight to the vote. All right? So I'm gonna call it out of order, the move the vote. Nope, nope, it's closed.
Can we clarify what we're voting on? It's very confusing right now.
I am about to do that.
Thank you.
Yep. One moment. We need the town clerk to be ready to be able to take our vote. So the move the vote is out of order because I was actually going to go to vote. So we don't need to vote to move the vote because we already are... Your moderator's gonna move the vote. So that's out. That is out of order. Now, we are going to be moving the actual vote for reconsidering. This is a vote to reconsider Motion 13 of Article 5, which is for the Everett Culvert Engineering. It requires a two-thirds vote. Yes, and then just to clarify, this is just to reconsider it. This is not a vote in favor or against 13. It is a vote to consider it for reconsider, to take it up for another vote. It's a vote to determine if we want to re-vote it. Requires a two-thirds vote. We will be using our clicker. If you vote yes, you would like to reconsider Article 13, Motion 13, for Article 5. If you vote no, you do not want to reconsider that vote. Requires a two-thirds vote of passage. 148 voting, 99 required for passage, 79 in affirmative, 69 in the negative. The motion fails. Moving on to Article 7, so we will not go on and debate that. We are now going to move on to Article 7. I am going to apologize at this moment to town meeting. This is a bond article. I do need to read it in its entirety. So, sorry. This moved and seconded that the vote of the town passed under Article 18 at the 2021 Spring Town Meeting is hereby amended to: A) Increase the amount of the appropriat- Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty; and four hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty cents shall be transferred from the unexpected proceeds of the town's general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand nineteen bonds dated August second, twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, issued for the purpose of funding the architectural design services and for the construction of the McCall Middle School Expansion Project, including the upgrading of building management and telephone systems, renovation of existing spaces, expansion of the cafeteria, and the construction of a four-story addition, which includes general education classrooms, specialist workspaces, public toilets, and other supplemental building, including all costs incidental and are related thereto as outlined in the February two thousand eighteen plans prepared by Flansburgh Architects and for traffic study, and any other associated improvements recommended therein, including but not limited to signalization, traffic calming, and signage, including all costs incidental and related thereto pursuant to the vote of the town passed March eighth, two thousand eighteen, Article One, which project has been completed and has no remaining liability pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty; and then, in accordance with Section Four-two of the Town of Winchester Home Rule Charter, the town manager shall have the authority to center, enter into contracts and approve payments with respect to the project. This, this motion is coming before you from the Capitol Planning. It requires a two-thirds vote. On behalf of Capitol Planning, Mr. Jimmy Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Well, if you remember back in the spring of 2021, we were all so happy here. We thought we'd finally got this flood mitigation behind us. This was the last project, but due to culvert, due to scheduling, due to increase of construction costs, every excuse you can think of, we find ourselves shot. The new amended request is ten thousand, ten million two hundred thousand, one million ninety thousand dollars. And we need the money to do the project. That's the bottom line. We've already voted it once. Our town staff has identified four hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents from two previous unexpended bond proceeds, which we can credit towards this. And we're actually looking for six hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty cents to, from the town meeting, which gives us a total amount of ninety-seven, thirty-four, five, seventeen, twenty-five. And I've been assured by town staff that we're almost through the permitting process, and that they expect the final draft late winter, and they would be able to put this out to bid sometime in the spring and start construction as soon as possible. So, with your support and a lot of hopes, I think we can pull it off this, beginning of this year from now. So, please support this. It's crucial to the flood mitigation program, and it's one of the longest projects we've ever done in this town, and it does work, so please support it.
This is a co-sponsored article by the Select Board. On behalf of the Select Board, Mr. Fallon.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, for anybody who's been here a while, we can remember the flooding behind the Winchester Vet, veterinarian, Brookside Road, Michael's Basement, formerly Filene's. And if we've done one project, typically, it's been the flood mitigation. So, I really can't, I don't have a lot to add to Jim's request, except that we were, there were a couple of things that slowed the process down was negotiating with the MBTA because these run in the right of way, and a little bit of a delay in the permitting. But this is coming to your neighborhood soon, it would be really great to get this project finished from beginning to end. Thank you, and we support it five-zero from the Select Board. Thanks.
FinCom, may we have your recommendation? Chair Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom voted unanimously in favor of this article. It is a signal piece of the flood mitigation program for the town. It's going to do, have a lot of other benefits. We, we are wholeheartedly in support of this article. Thank you.
May we hear a recommendation from the school committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The school committee voted unanimously favorable action. This enables remapping of the flood zone once this is done through FEMA, which will reduce the flood risk on the current Morocco site, and it'll create more opportunities for citing a potential future of Morocco schools. So, school committee is fully in favor.
Thank you. At this time, town meeting members, if you have any questions or comments, now's your time. Ms. Sarah?
I'm Ann Sarah from Precinct One. I am thoroughly in favor of this because me and most of my, the people that write me live just upstream of this bridge, and opening it will considerably mitigate our flood problems. But I am concerned about a clause that says that there will be construction of a supplemental culvert and surface floodway at Skilling's Athletic Fields, including all costs and incidental related to. So, a couple of years ago, maybe it was more like six years ago, I stood before you and I said that if you were to change Skilling's Field from being a pervious surface into being what it is now, a non-natural surface, you would have problems with flooding. And today, I see that now we need a supplemental culvert and surface floodway at Skilling's Athletic Field, and I also see that we have problems with Nelson Street that we felt were funding today. And I would like someone to speak to, to that.
I'm going to have the town manager provide you direction of why the language of Skilling's Athletic Fields is in this motion. It's reallocation. So, to clarify, we are not do, this is not proposing work at Skilling's Athletic Field. On behalf of the town, town manager, Beth Rudolph.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, as you can see up on the screen here, we have just over four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in unexpended bond proceeds from previous borrowings that the town has done that are being reallocated to that project. And in the motion, that four-hundred, forty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars is coming from that previous Skilling's Field project. So, there is no new work proposed as part of this project on Skilling's Field. It's just a reallocation of those bond proceeds from that previous project. Thank you.
Seeing no other, town meeting members rise, I believe you're ready for the vote. We'll do it by a clicker. A two-thirds vote is required. Give us one moment while we get the voter rolling. A vote in the affirmative, you are voting to amend Article eighteen of the Springtown Meeting twenty, for 2021, for the, to help support the Morocco culvert. Vote no is you do not want to modify that for funding for the Morocco culvert. Thirty seconds. Hundred and forty-four having voted. Hundred and forty-four having voted, ninety-six required for passing. There's a hundred and forty-two in the affirmative, two in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Article Eight. Article Eight is on page twelve of your handbook from the Fall Annual Town Meeting. This is cement Article Twenty-two of the Fall Town Meeting from 2022 for Arbor Lane and Wendell Street Pumping Station. It is moved and seconded that the vote of the town passed under Article Twenty-two of the 2002 Fall Town, Fall Town Meeting is hereby amended to increase the authorized borrowing amount for the project from one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one million six hundred thousand dollars, such that, such that said amended vote shall now read as follows. Moved that one million six hundred thousand dollars is appropriated to pay costs of construction, constructing a water pumping station to increase water pressure and flow for the Arbor Lane and Wendell Streets area, including the payment of costs related to design and engineering, original equipment for their pumping station, pipeline connections, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow set amount pursuant to General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Subsection Eight, Four. One minute, I'll put it on the screen for you for the words. Or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereafter, that the town manager shall be authorized to have oversight of the project, and then, in accordance with the Section Four-dash-two of the Town of Winchester Home Rule Charter, the town manager shall have the authority to enter into contracts and approve payments with respect to the project, or to take any other action that related thereto. A two-thirds vote is required. This is being provided to you by the Select Board. During the questions of town meeting members, we'll put the language on the board for anyone who needs it. For right now, we'll keep moving with our presentations. On behalf of the Select Board, Mr. Fallon.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and, oh, wow, Matt, huh? Very temperamental. I should have thanked all of the town meeting members earlier, so my apologies for lack of manners. I presented this last fall, and for, this is for thirty-eight homes up in the Wendell Lane, sorry, Wendell Street Arbor Lane area, and this relates to PFAS and water and so forth, and put them on the town water, have a temporary pumping station, and this is for a permanent pumping station. We went to bid, and the bids came in, as you've heard, this is a recurring theme, slightly higher, and so we're just asking for the additional funding for that. One of the reasons, it, sometimes it's not always about the cost of materials driving it, it's, contractors have so much work that they, for, especially for municipal work, that they have pricing power. So, sometimes that's reflected in some of, in some of these numbers. So, in case the, we expect, the bids came in at the end of the summer, and, and we expect, we've ordered, we've ordered the bid there, ordered the materials, and the pumps take a certain period of time to come in, so we'd expect to have this work start in the spring and be done by the fall. So, we voted in favor, five-o for this. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Finance Committee voted eleven to one, eleven in favor, favorable action on this article. This is an important article. It's, it's obviously, it meets the criteria I've mentioned before. It's an immediate need. Unfortunately, we're going to have to raise the debt exclusion amount, and we're in favor of this article. There was one member who abstained. I think that was because he missed the earlier discussion, which is FinCom's practice. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, town meeting members, any questions or comments?
Hi, I just had one question. There's just been a lot of questions about, through Madam Moderator, to, I guess, the Select Board, about engineering and then the increased cost of the actual projects and how to go about funding that, although I fully support this. I'm just wondering if this is one example of engineering projects too early and then completion costs being too high? So, I'm just wondering if this is one example of that, and what we're trying to sort of remedy with other projects that we're doing.
I'm going to rephrase it just slightly. Give me a thumbs up if you think it's the right way. To the Select Board, can you please provide, town meeting, more information on the cost increase and what caused it, and is this a potential for other things to have cost increases?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, a couple of things. First, specific to this project, there was, the engineering wasn't done too early or anything like that. The bids just came in higher based on availability of contractors. As John mentioned, they can kind of control the pricing because it's supply and demand right now. As I mentioned in my presentation on Monday, you know, the last two years have been unprecedented time and rise in construction costs, and a lot of the projects you see us do take time from engineering to completion. And it's not that it's done too early, they're just steps in the process. For example, the culvert that we're talking about needed MBTA and regulatory approval from the state, which we can't control. We hope to stay on a certain timeline, but if there are delays along that path, we're at their mercy. And the same thing was true on Lake Street Bridge, which are the two projects that kind of have, you know, been over budget. But really, it was the rise in construction costs. And the other thing is, once we have engineering, there's also a delay in getting it to this body. So, it just depends on when we, when we, when we do it, in the sense that we only meet twice a year, and that, you know, given the fact that prices have been going up twenty-six percent since twenty, in twenty, between 2021 and 2023, that also led to additional costs and rising costs that we had to handle. But this, this situation, in this specific instance, was engineering, in fact, this project has moved very quickly, is that engineering was complete, went out to bid, and these were the bids based on the, the contracts that we, the contractors that bid on the project. So, it had nothing to do with engineering being done too early.
Yep, please.
Hi, Anza Russianato, Precinct One. I guess my question relates to the previous question, but is it possible to have done this project all in one shot, right? Rather than doing an engineering study, then coming back and asking for the rest of the money, asking for all the money all at once, so that you do the engineering and then you go right into the project? Ask for more than you think you need, and that way you don't have to come back, and that way you don't have that delay, and you, you don't have the risk of the engineering project being done too early?
Thank you. To the Select Board, can you please provide, town meeting, information on if projects could be complete? You could provide a complete number with the engineering and the work to be done as one, and if that could have been done in this case?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you for the question. You know, certainly, we can guess, but it would be just a guess. That's why we do these in phases. We do engineering to come back with you with a real number that we believe the project will be at. But because of lag time, there can certainly, and again, kind of unprecedented times here in the last two years, with the rise in costs, you know, it can increase. But certainly, we could come with engineering and come with a ballpark number, but we'd be, you know, well over and have excess asset, excess funding that we need to for these projects, which might hamper us in doing other projects down the road. As you can see from the debate that we have here, we run pretty lean in dollars in terms of the list of projects that we're trying to get done and our capital needs. So, I'd hate to be here guessing on numbers if we had to do it that way.
Just one follow-up. So, yes, just with respect, I mean, we've seen three projects, one that was off by, this one's off by thirty percent, the one before that was off by a hundred percent, the other one was off by more than a million dollars. So, I mean, is it really that much different than a guess?
To the Select Board.
Is it much more than a guess?
To the Select Board, I would like to direct this question to the town manager.
Sure.
Thank you. To the town manager, can you please provide, town meeting members, information about the numbers that you come town meeting, are they any different than a guess?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, I think you have all seen me, I've worked for this town for almost nineteen, nineteen years. We have put, brought many, many years of projects before you, and I think we have a very good track record of not having to come back very often to ask for additional funding. Since 2020, we have bid over twenty projects that have come in on or under budget, including the transfer station project, which is a six and a half million dollar project. So, I think, as the Chair of the Select Board mentioned-
Thank you for the question. You know, certainly we can guess, but it would be just a guess. That's why we do these in phases. We do engineering to come back with you with a real number that we believe the project will be at. But because of lag time, they're concerned, and again, kind of unprecedented times here in the last two years with the rise in costs, you know, it can increase. But certainly, we could come with engineering and come with a ballpark number, but we'd be, you know, well over and have excess, excess funding that we need to for these projects, which might hamper us in doing other projects down the road. As you can see from the debate that we have here, we run pretty lean in dollars in terms of the list of projects that we're trying to get done and our capital needs. So I'd hate to be here guessing on numbers if we had to do it that way.
Just one follow-up. So yes, just with respect, I mean, we've seen three projects, one that was off by, this one's off by 30%, the one before that was off by 100%, the other one was off by more than a million dollars. So, I mean, is it really that much different than a guess?
To the select board.
Is it much more than a guess?
To the select board, I would like to direct this question to the town manager.
Sure.
Thank you. To the town manager, can you please provide, Tom Meeting members, information about the numbers that you come town meeting? Are they any different than a guess?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I think you have all seen me, I've worked for this town for almost 19, 19 years. We have put, brought many, many years of projects before you, and I think we have a very good track record of not having to come back very often to ask for additional funding. Since 2020, we have bid over 20 projects that have come in on or under budget, including the transfer station project, which is a $6.5 million project. So I think, as the Chair of the Select Board mentioned, we are living in unprecedented times. I think anybody who's doing a renovation on your own property has seen that, that construction costs have increased substantially and increased substantially even after you may have somebody under contract because the price of doing business has increased. I think, you know, we are doing our best to control costs, to reduce scope as we can, but in this case, this was a critical water quality project that we fast-tracked. We used ARPA funds to complete the design. This project was identified in late 2021, and we are able to, we were able to install a temporary pumping station last summer, and we were able to bring a project to bid and to award a contract and to move forward this fall with construction. So I hope that you'll support this increased borrowing authorization, and I commit that we are doing our best to bring our projects in on time and on budget in all cases. Thank you.
Seeing that Tom Meeting members are ready for the vote, a two-thirds vote is required. We'll try a voice vote. If not, then we will go to our clickers. This is a vote to amend Article 22 of Fall Town Meeting, 2022, for the Arbor Lane and Wendell Street Pumping Station. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimous, if a motion passes. Moving on to Article 10. Article 10, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to authorize the select board to enter a lease of a 0.39 acre town-owned property located adjacent to 955 Main Street for parking purposes. Said lease term being authorized up to a 20-year term and to authorize the select board to negotiate acceptable lease terms. This is being presented to you by the select board. It is a two-thirds vote required. I want, Tom Meeting, to, before we go into discussion of this article, I also want to make sure that you are aware that anything of discussion of other parcels that are not before you in the motion will be out of order.
You can go right and left. That'll go forward, that'll go backwards.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, let's go to a picture here. I don't know how familiar you are with 955 Main Street, Dr. O'Brien, anybody goes to Dr. O'Brien, it's the lot, it's way in the back there. This is part of the Uber Loop, John Miller, and, and so the town got this, I don't know, 30 or 40 years ago as part of negotiations. Now, I know one of the questions that may come up is if it's available for affordable housing, and it's a very good question. We have thoroughly vetted that, and it's a completely unbuildable lot in large part because there's a MWR, a sewer line, water line that goes down bisects the parcel lengthwise. Furthermore, there is no access to the site other than through the parking lot that's owned by 955 Main Street. So we are here before you tonight, asking you to allow us to enter, prior to COVID, the lot was leased to 955 Main Street. At the beginning of COVID, we entered into a number of license agreements, but license agreements can't go on in perpetuity, and we need to enter back either, we need to enter into a lease agreement with some entity, whether it's 955 Main Street or someone else. So we are here before you tonight, asking you for the authority to go to RFP for lease or sale of the property. We will secure an appraisal ahead of time for both scenarios, and that's, that's really the extent of our request. We voted, the select board voted 5-0 in favor of this action. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just a quick question. We took this up as a potential lease. Is that correct? Not a, not a sale? Okay. Yeah, Finance Committee, after hours of, hours of debate, decided that the opportunity to take some revenue in on a lease was a, was a, was a very good idea, and we voted 12-0 in favor of Article 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the lease of 955 Main Street?
Hi, Pamela Court, Precinct Five. Can I just get some clarification? Was I mistaken when the select board member who presented said that this would also authorize them to possibly sell that property?
To the select board, can you please clarify if this lease gives the 955 Main Street authority to sell this?
Sorry, Ms. Court, I, oh, thank you, Madam Moderator. Ms. Court, I'm sorry, it was only for lease. I misspoke.
Okay. Thank you.
Further on the question?
Roger Wilson, Precinct One. When you said that discussion of other parcels was out of order, Madam Moderator?
Not a butters. The butters are fine.
Okay, so the triangular piece there is owned by the town, am I correct?
To the town, yes, they're saying yes. The town manager is saying yes, I'm going to save time. Go ahead.
And is, is that unbuildable?
To the town manager, is the abutting property, that is the triangle shape that is on our screen out to the upper right, is that a buildable parcel?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. That triangular piece has no frontage or legal access.
So, follow-up. So if, if I was to, what is it, Russell Street there? What is the name of that street? The, the? So if I was to propose to buy one of those lots and, buy the triangular piece and access it over the parking lot, would the select board entertain that?
It, would, this, I believe the question to the select board is, if someone were to combine lots to make it accessible, would that be, would the, would, that would provide access, would you consider that as an option?
I, I really don't know how to respond to that, except to say that the article is allowing us to lease the property for parking purposes. It doesn't mean we necessarily have to enter into a lease, it's giving us authority to do that. If there was a better offer that came through or something like that, then, I mean, the select board in theory could consider it, but this only article is allowing us to lease it, which we think is the best use to get revenue to the town, which is what has been going on right now for years. And, but certainly if there was some type of arrangement that could be made, then, you know, hypothetically, the select board could consider it. But we're here before you tonight, asking for authorization to lease this property to 955 Main Street for parking purposes only.
So, the reason I ask these questions, number one, we've, we have been leasing it, how much have we been making from?
Can the town manager provide information on the cost that we have been receiving from the lease agreement that was currently previously in place? It is being researched right now.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So the licensing fee that the licenser is paying right now is $8,505 annually, and I'm reading the licensing agreement as we go, so.
So, I listen, well, you don't want me to refer to other properties, but this is a pretty big.
No, I, I don't want to go into other sales and leases of other properties. We're talking about this and everything around it, that's fine.
But it's a big chunk of land, and it abuts a big chunk of land, both of which are owned by the town. And it doesn't strike me as particularly difficult to imagine how you could create access to that town if that was your, I mean, to those properties if that was your inclination. But the, the thing that I want to have is confidence that we're really trying to generate, maximize value for the citizens by looking at these things with a little bit of creativity. I mean, I shouldn't be the one surprising the select board with the fact that we own the other piece of property.
Thank you. Mr. Jarius, are you coming as a planning board?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did not ask for your recommendation. Please proceed.
We actually didn't have a recommendation.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to comment on Mr. Wilson's comments, if I may.
Yep.
So I think the key takeaway here is, as the select board pointed out, that the red encircled property has an MWR easement, so you couldn't actually build any permanent structure on that. You could probably only use that to get access to the triangle. To get access to the triangle, you'd have to take out one of the houses on that, I forget the name of the road already. So, and then the triangle itself is pretty small because you'd actually have to put a road in there in order, unless you just put a single house back there. So it, it has a really strange geometry, and I think it would be difficult to imagine someone buying that in order to put in a structure. I'm more than willing, you know, Tom Plant and I can work with you to take a look at that, but when I look at it now, it just seems really awkward. So, thank you.
Further on the question?
Through, Ben Albionni, Precinct Seven, through you, Madam Moderator, to the select board, I think, and I'm not sure how to word this, but maybe an amendment to it. Do we, do we have to lease it for a 20-year lease, or could we, could we put that to a five-year lease, so if there was something to be changed, would be able to change with the developing lot changes? I don't know if you do it through five, you know, five or 10, but if we lock something in for 20 years, that sort of sticks us into a situation that would, you know, if we could do it in five-year increments, that might be better with the ever-changing environment of what's going on with that property.
To the select board, can you please provide, Tom Meeting members, your thoughts on the reduction of the term of the lease?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you for the question. So the triangular parcel, to the parcel in the red, also has a 30-foot grade change, just so everyone is aware about that. But to your question, it is not to exceed 20 years, so it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to enter into a 20-year lease, it just gives us authority to go up to 20 years. We're trying to try and negotiate with these people.
I, I guess what I'm asking for is to not have it be a 20-year lease.
To the select board, would you consider in your negotiations to reduce that? I think they need to convene real quick to discuss it. So the question, just to be clear, that is being asked, is in this lease, it says it's up to 20 years, they can't go beyond, but the select board's going to come back and say what they're, if they would be going to look at shorter terms in that negotiations?
So, first of all, there's, there's no motion pending, but, you know, in talking to my colleagues, we want the maximum flexibility and the maximum value for this land by entering into a lease term that may be five years with a five-year renewal or two five-year tenant options or, that may maximize value to this lot rather than just a five-year lease. So I think at this point, we would appreciate the flexibility of the town meeting in order to try and negotiate the most advantageous financial deal for the town.
Thank you.
Could, I.
Go ahead. You have a follow-up question?
Yes, follow-up question. Could we make that mandatory, that it's the town's option and not the 955's parking option?
Can you please, I didn't quite understand what you're asking.
To make the option, the option, if, if the select board was saying that to do a five-year option with another five-year option or a 10-year option, to make it the town's option and not 955's, so that we, the town controls it and not 955?
To the select board, would it? To the select board, can you give information regarding?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, I guess I do want to just state how this process works. So if you give us this authority, we put out an RFP, and we see what responses we get. We would, you know, it's all subject to negotiation, so right now, we have a license agreement that's, you know, netting the town $8,000. We think this, you know, that's, that's low. We think it's, you know, the property is more valuable to be used in a lease. So certainly, you know, we're looking for that flexibility to put something out that will maximize this value. So to answer your question, I would ask that town meeting give us the maximum flexibility and that, you know, certainly, you know, a lot of us on the board, we have legal counsel, we're going to try to do what's best for the town, you know, in terms of options and things like that. So they could be town options, they could be tenant options, it just depends, you know, what, what will get us the maximum value.
Thank you.
Go, because, go ahead, you're in line first.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator, Philip Prateroli, Precinct Six, through you to the select board. The motion states that the authorization is to enter into a lease with 955, but is there going to be an RFP, or are you just going to negotiate with one person?
To the select board, will you be doing an RFP for the lease or just going directly to 955 Main Street to negotiate?
No, so, thank you, Madam Moderator. The, the motion says, it refers to 955 Main Street only in the sack that it's the property located adjacent to 955 Main Street. This is to enter into a lease with anyone. So we would have to put out an RFP and go through the RFP process. So it's not exclusive to 955 Main Street and the owners there.
Thank you.
Further on the question?
Thank you, Carol Savage, Precinct Five, through you, Madam Moderator, to the select board. Just to clarify, this is the extension of the current lot?
That is correct.
Giant parking lot, okay. I recall when I think this paving of this portion of this lot came before town meeting, whether we wanted to negotiate with 955 to do that. And at that time, there were all kinds of parking problems, traffic problems up in that neck of the, the town, and I remember speaking because there were some neighbor, you know, question of the butters, how would they feel about this parcel of land becoming a parking lot? And 955 argued, we really need it because people are parking out on Main, Main Street, and, and it's a problem for the neighborhood, all kinds of traffic. And, and that 955 Main Street is one of, and I remember speaking at the time, 955 Main Street is one of the more valuable commercial revenue parcels in our town, and I spoke in favor at the time, my kid were orthodontists, so that tells you how long ago it was, because long ago, the braces came off. But the, this, this lot serves a purpose for 955 Main Street that also serves that neighborhood, I would argue, by getting less cars off the road. And I support this motion, and giving the select board the latitude to negotiate a lease for a 20-year term is completely reasonable. That 20 years will fly by and it'll add value to that business, which is valuable to the town and to the taxpayers of the town by providing commercial revenue. So I think you can see why I support it, and I hope we just vote yes.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Yes, Jim Johnson, Precinct Six. Carol's 100% right. Many years ago, we were involved in the 955 parcel, and 955 Main Street, if you want to bring up the other slide, I'll explain to you. But the 955 Main
But the 955 Main Street, the board then really wasn't that interested in a revenue aspect of it. It was more of a public safety and getting the traffic off the street. That area in orange was the Bay Railroad track, 955 Main Street. In the original license agreement, agreed to go to the total expense of building and retaining walls, pay, cleaning out railroad bed, and then paving it, maintaining it, and using it. It's been 20, 25-plus years. But if you want to remember, traffic was the issue, and public safety was the issue that drove the original, A Board of Selectmen to propose that and work out the details with 955. That was the reason. Just imagine cars parked up and down Main Street. It was tight, it was very tight. And also, at the time, my 955 Main Street slightly exceeded the parking requirement, so technically, they had enough places for cars to park. So, please keep that in mind.
Further on the question?
Yes, hi, Jason Roder, Precinct 5. I know our affordable housing situation is acute, so I just wonder, because my geometry is bad, do we know the size of the triangle parcel in acres?
Can you also provide the slope? To the select board, can you please provide Town Meeting the size and the slope of these parcels?
So, the parcel we're talking about in red is 13, about approximately 13,000 square feet, but there's a pipe that runs right through the middle of it, so you can't dig.
And the triangle parcel?
I don't know the.
All right. Can you give us one moment, we'll get you the answer for that.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry. I didn't want to go in that way. Here we go. Now I'm getting nervous.
Acreage will work as well. For those who do not know, this is actually available online for anyone to.
See if you can find it faster than me.
I didn't mean it that way, I just, if you want to learn about parcels, this is an excellent way to go, it's available. You're almost there.
All right, so, really what I want to show is the topography.
Thank you for providing us the slope.
So, this is, this is our Berlin at the, every see, okay, at the top here are these houses. The grades up here are 110, 105, and the grades down here at the bottom of that triangular parcel are 70. So, it's a significant grade differential between the two. And even from Russell Road to the parking area is probably on the order of 10 feet. And the, was there a question about the area of the triangular piece? I think it's 13, yeah, 13,000. So, 13,053 feet, square feet.
Thank you very much. Further on the question?
Through the moderator, to the select board, are there other potential, does the select board have in mind other potential people or businesses that they're looking at as potential leasers of this property? And to, to build on that question, how, how much revenue do you expect to generate? What are your estimates of what, what kind of leasing fee you could, you could make on this?
To the select board, can you please provide information on how much lease revenue you might get, and if you anticipate there'll be other interested businesses or property owners would like to?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, thank you for the question. So, the first part of your question has to do with what potential world of businesses could we, you know, expect to bid on this project? We don't know, but we can cer, we'll, we'll put it out to an RFP, and, and fair market value will, will dictate what, what, who's interested. In terms of the, what we expect to get out of this, it's tough to say. You know, we had an appraisal done, you know, a couple of years ago about what the rental income could be from this property, but that is outdated at this point, so I don't feel comfortable just throwing out a number, because it's, it's not fresh, and it's not a few years, it's a few years old at this point. We would expect that, you know, if this was approved, we would do an appraisal, you know, for what the best, what we could expect for rental income, and kind of craft our RFP that way.
Okay, I have a follow-up question.
Yep, please proceed.
Well, actually, I'd like to make a motion to amend, and I apologize for not doing this in advance, Madam Moderator, because it's just occurring to me now. I'm uncomfortable with giving full authority to the select board based on some of the decisions that have been made by the select board over the past number of years, that have not been the most officially responsible decisions. And so, I would like to make a motion to amend that we add that the authority goes to both the select board and the planning board, so that we can ensure that a better and more responsible decision is made with respect to how things go.
I'm being told by Town Council that it needs to be out of order because of, the planning board does not have authority to go into lease agreements. Counsel? They, 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 before they can, they can get approval from the planning board. They can be reworded. To Ms. Court, I believe what you're actually asking to put it into order is that you would like the planning board to review it and approve it prior to the select board going into a lease agreement.
Well, that or have it brought back to Town Meeting for approval.
Which one would you like as your motion?
I think I'd like to make the motion that it comes back to Town Meeting for approval.
So, at this point, there's a motion on the table to modify the motion for Article 10, that prior to going into the lease of a .39 acre town-owned property located adjacent to 955 Main Street, let it come back before Town Meeting. Is there a second? Can you please state your name? I can't actually see you. Oh, you're way in the back, that's why. Dorothy Symbolia has a second. With that, I'm going to allow the motion. Did you want to give any further information about why?
Yes, we've given authority to the select board in the past on a number of different issues that have either failed to gain the best financial benefit to the town, or have actually caused us to lose money. Is it in order for me to give those examples specifically, Madam Moderator?
You may give the examples of why, I just do not want to debate those decisions.
Without debating those decisions, we were very quick to give the authority to take a property by eminent domain before we had actually submitted an RFP to find out what the commercial value would be, and we lost $1 million on the Washington Swanton property. And another example is a parcel that we gave authority for the select board to put out an RFP for the purpose of affordable housing, that was valued in appraisal for $450,000, and they accepted an offer for $40,000. And then, before the purchase and sale was signed, they went out and had another appraisal done, that appraised it for lower, so that they could justify. Okay, I'll stop. That's, that's out of order, I'm getting waived.
Yeah, you're about, yeah, you're about to get there. So, may we have a recommendation from the select board?
I guess this would be a good time to give a public service announcement, that there's an election in March, there'll be two seats open. My seat will be open, I will not be running. So, certainly, if you think that we've done a bad job, you know, I encourage all of you to pull papers and to consider running. Certainly, it would be great to have options. With that, I did speak to my colleagues, the, and Town Council. If we have to wait to come back to approve a lease, it's, it's, no one's going to financially wait that long and do the deal. The numbers will change. It's like renting an apartment. I mean, are you going to rent an apartment and say, well, we'll come back in six months and reconsider it, and, and wait for approval then? It just doesn't work. And so, I think, you know, you can either trust us on this or not. And certainly, you know, I would disagree with Ms. Court's characterizations of, of the projects that she listed. I think those are general assumptions, and certainly her personal opinion, which she certainly attedled to. But, you know, I don't think we lost $1 million on Washington Swanton Street, we're building affordable housing. You know, I'm reminded of the quote, of the quote from Bill Parcells, when, you know, he was angry with Robert Kraft at the time, is, "They want me to cook the dinner, but they won't let me shop for the groceries." You want us all to generate revenue in this town, in addition to, you know, to fund everything we need to fund. We're trying to do that, at this point with this property. You heard from the planning board, you heard from the town manager, we've put the project up here in topography. It's, 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 it's a rental for parking at this point in time. It's nothing more than that. So, we're going to put out an RFP for that, and certainly, if there are other businesses in the area that want to bid on it, you know, certainly, we'll see. But we're going to get the most money we can, and we're going to have a guide along the way, which is the appraisal for that rental, for that, for what we think the, the best use and what the rental value should be. You know, that's the best we can do. That's what we do every day, we go, we do this job, we go to these meetings every Monday night, every other Monday night, we last, we sit there for four hours sometimes, we do the best we can.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
We, we haven't changed our views on this motion.
Any questions or comments from Town Meeting on the motion to amend? We have one, we'll have one, and then we'll call the vote.
James Ferguson, Precinct 4. The original motion says it's a vote to authorize the select board. This motion would take away the authority of the select board, so it almost seems that this motion is out of order because it contradicts the actual motion. So, I am against it.
Did you, are you waiting for it to go back to the original?
After I voted.
Okay, all right, so let's go to the vote. This is a vote to, I heard a big no. Were you talking to me, or were you talking to each other when you said no?
Can you restate the motion?
Yeah, I was going to, but I'm hearing a big no. Ms. Sarah, if you're going to comment, I was going to vote. Is it a issue regarding vote?
I would like some clarification regarding the last person's comment. I think that you need to clarify that comment, and whether or not you should go to the lawyer and figure out whether this vote is.
The motion is in order, does it actually? The motion that Mrs. Court made is in order. The comment that was made was incorrect. Okay? Yeah, yeah. So. Yes, we, we're going to restate your motion one more time. All right, so I have moved and seconded, this is from Pamela Court, that the motion be amended to have the select board come back to the Town Meeting before the lease is given. So, it allows them still to negotiate, but they cannot go into the lease without coming back to Town Meeting. It is in order, because we're giving them the authority to go into negotiations, but they cannot sign that lease without Town Meeting's approval. That is what the motion is changing it to.
Yes, thank you very much for stating that so clearly.
Thank you. So, right, right now, we're going to vote to amend the motion under Article 10, to, so that the select board will no longer have the authority to go into the lease. They can only negotiate the lease, and will have to return back to us before they can go and accept the lease. Requires a two-thirds vote to amend? We'll try a voice vote first. It's a toss-up, well, let's see. All those in favor? All those opposed? The noes have it by a two-thirds majority. Moving back to the motion, original motion on Article 10. Thank you, Mr. Deering.
Madam Chairman, Board of Selectmen, and fellow Town Meeting members, just a little bit of history. I was on the Board of Selectmen and actually negotiated the sale of 955, as well as, that land there was always, was the Woben Loop, was where the trains went up, and it's right, there's an MWRA line that runs right down the middle. So, nothing can be built on that land at all. Matter of fact, when they were doing the train station downtown, they had to keep all their equipment off to send them there, but the MWRA didn't want any equipment. But what I'm getting at is, you only have one taker for that. It's a buyer's market, because who else would want the parking there that you probably have to go through 955's land to get there? So, I think the only one that's going to, wants there for parking is 955. And, you know, I, what you say, they're getting $8,000 a year, so I don't think, you know, you're really in a bargaining position to get much more for that land, because you only got one buyer. Thank you.
Further on the question, Mr. Nixon?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Taking advantage to postpone my presentation of Article 12 tonight. I, I'm not looking forward to that. I, I have a question. I have two questions and a suggestion. My question is, this parcel is well-maintained. Many of us visit this property either to see clinicians, or our kids do. I park here pretty frequently. Who maintains this parcel? Is it maintained by the, I believe it's a Professional Condo Association at 955? Do we have any cost obligations presently to maintain the lot? Then I have a follow-up.
To the select board, does the town have any maintenance fees associated with this parcel during its previous lease?
The licensee maintains the property at this time. So, we have, we have no maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
According to the license agreement that we have, and that was the same in the expired lease.
And Madam Moderator, then, my, my follow-up, I want to, because Ms. Rudolph and Ms. Cafarella have done a great job with these email blasts from the town manager's office, I read the other day, I think we have an RFP out for some DC fast-charging stations on town property. And understanding that the towns, the town has a goal of finding places and spaces to put in chargers for electric vehicles. I don't own one, but I understand why we're doing it, and I respect. I don't own one, but I understand why we're doing it and I respect it. And I understand that one of the interests is to try to locate chargers in sort of convenient areas sort of throughout the town. We issued an RFP, it seems to me this is perhaps the kind of opportunity where the town, because we own the parcel, maybe there is an opportunity to get out an RFP. Is there a revenue opportunity for fast charging? It's a heavily used lot. So my, my quest, I'm not coming up here to make, you know, any amendment, but I'm curious to know, should the Board execute a lease, could we and would we still maintain rights for improvements on this parcel? Particularly if they might include something like charging. Twenty years is a long time, and I, my impression is the town's really pushing to try to make more of these available. So if somebody could just sort of speak to that opportunity and perhaps that's a revenue source for us on top of any revenue from the lease to 955.
To the Select Board, would you consider in your lease negotiations putting some terms in there so that EV chargers might be made available at this location?
Thank you, Madam.
Or improvements generally? Or improvements down the road?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And thank you, Chris, for the, make sure the question. Yes, of course, you know, everything's subject to negotiation. If you were to give us this authority tonight, we would agenda the item, you know, probably a couple of times on our agenda, and you could certainly, if you have suggestions, pass them along to any of us and via email or come to a meeting and come to public comment if you had those ahead of time. But certainly, we would consider any, you know, all good points that we would certainly be able to consider in negotiating this process.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Samantha Allison, Precinct 3. More of an observation than a question and maybe commentary for my fellow Town Meeting members. The Town Clerk might be able to remind me how long I've been a Town Meeting member, but I think it's seven, eight, maybe going on nine years now. And I'm noticing a trend that we seem to be really good at second-guessing our elected officials and our various boards and committees of volunteers. So I really want to encourage all of us, myself included, to try to be more actively engaged in the conversations as they're happening in these committees and boards, and go to the meetings and engage in public comment and drive for your interests such that when we bring things to this body, I think the questions and clarifications are great, but at some point, we need to empower our boards and our committees to move forward. And as Mr. Mucci so eloquently pointed out, if you don't like their decisions, then vote in someone else and/or run yourselves. So with that, I will yield. Thank you.
Further on the question?
Dorothy Symboli, Precinct 6. Madam Moderator, through you to the Select Board. I'm not exactly sure how you could structure this, but is there a way to have the lease include a non-exclusive easement or something of the like so that there was public access to that parcel for the public to park on in the event that we were to put electric
To this Select Board, would you ever consider having, allowing access to that parcel in part of the lease negotiations? However, I think there's a legal issue there, so I'm going to let you just take it. It's getting late.
Sure. Come on up, Jay. We can do this all night.
Dorothy, I think that's well-intended and certainly there's some ways perhaps to work around this, but to obtain a long-term interest in the property that is at 955 Main Street would require an easement coming back to the town. That would be subject to its own Town Meeting vote and a little bit beyond the scope of this article. So I, it's not that it's a bad idea, but we're really kind of pulling a string now as to what we can permissibly do under this very limited warrant article.
At this time, I believe Town Meeting is ready for the vote. To do this, we're going to take our clickers real quick. On out, we are voting on Article 10. To authorize the Select Board to negotiate an acceptable lease on a property that is located adjacent to 955 Main Street. A vote yes, and the green button means that you are in favor of the Select Board going into negotiating an acceptable lease on 955 Main Street's adjacent property. If you vote no, it means you are not in favor of that. One hundred and forty-one having voted, ninety-four required for adoption, one hundred and thirty-two in the affirmative, nine in the negative. The motion is adopted. At this time, I believe Town Meeting is done. It is 9:36. I think at this, am I saying, do you want to keep going? No, I didn't think so. Zip it. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you. We will see you next Monday at 6:30 in the auditorium. In between, in between that, if you have any questions on the articles before us, please reach out to your boards and committees who are the sponsors of those articles to get your questions answered. If, please also turn in your clickers and also have a wonderful Veterans Day.
I'm Alan Idon here at the Winchester High School, and you have just seen the conclusion of our second Fall Town Meeting, Fall 2023 Town Meeting. So we bounced around a little bit this evening, so let's go back and what we covered in the first half. We were back on Article 5, which was 20 motions for, put forward by the Capital Planning Committee. So we started with Motion 8, I'll go quickly through these. Motion 8 was $116,000 for Washington Street Bridge repairs. That's an engineering study for Washington Street Bridge repairs. That passed. A risk assessment study proposed by the police chief for $150,000 passed, as did a $270,000 appropriation for a dump truck for the DPW, a pretty substantial-sized dump truck. Playground equipment and for, at Lincoln School, Lincoln and VO schools for $400,000 was passed. An engineering study for the Shore Road Bridge did pass for $100,000. However, an engineering study proposed for a culvert, a very old culvert on Everett Ave, after some discussion, was voted down for $100,000. Article 14, Motion Number 14, for a $45,000 vehicle for the DPW manager, that was passed, as did, as was $210,000 for replacing the lights in field with energy-efficient LED lights, and we were told that they would have a lifespan of about 25 years. Article, Motion 16 for engineering the Packer Tennis Courts was actually voted on on Monday, and that passed. Seventeen was $25,000 for tabulation equipment for the Town Clerk. The comment there was, many people now are voting by mail or in, in advance, and those ballots cannot be opened before Election Day, so this is a high-speed machine to count and tabulate those ballots. $75,000 for some studies of the McCall HVAC system, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, passed. The comment there was that there were several, almost four different buildings in the McCall complex there, all with different age and different types of HVAC systems, and this was an attempt to bring them all together. $90,000 for a water and sewer dump truck was passed. And another hundred, $225,000 additional appropriation for drainage improvements to the Winchester High School and Nelson Street project. As with a lot of these projects, they were looking for additional funds because, not surprisingly, a lot of them have come in over budget. All right, so that, that wrapped up the capital planning articles. We went on to, oh, I should say that at the beginning of Town Meeting, the moderator commented on volunteer opportunities available in the town and the boards and committees that are looking for them, and I believe those are listed on the town's website. So after recess, first of all, we got a motion to reconsider, move to reconsider Motion Number 13. That was the Everett Avenue culvert. The comment was that the culvert is so old that no plans exist, and there needs to be an engineering study to evaluate what cost is involved. And again, a lot of the comments from, especially from the Finance Committee, were that some of these engineering studies are only a small portion of the expected expenditure, but the rebuttal to that is that the engineering studies are needed to figure out what the cost would be and to bring that, those projects to Town Meeting. That reconsideration motion failed. Article 7 was a, again, an additional funding for the Morocco School culvert project, which was originally scheduled, appropriated for 9.1 million, and that was to move it to 10.2 million, again, because quotes were coming in, bids were coming in over the budget amounts. That passed. Increasing the funding for a pumping station at Arbor Lane and Wendell Street area, again, was increased from, the original proposal was 1.6 million, no, the original proposal, sorry, the original proposal was 1.35 million, that was increased to 1.6 million. That's to replace a temporary pumping station in that area that apparently was until, if you, until the temporary station was put in, was being supplied with Woburn water. That was originally appropriated as Article 22 in the Fall Town Meeting. That passed. A lot of the discussion in the past few minutes was, and somewhat heated too, Article 10. Now, Article 10, there's a, sort of a landlocked parcel belonging to the town behind 955 Main Street, the medical building. This land was part of the original Woburn Loop that the town purchased many years ago, the, where the train tracks ran. This article is to give the Select Board the authority to lease that parking lot, sign a lease up to 20 years with any interested parties, although the comments were mainly that probably 955 Main Street, the condo association there, would be the only, the only party interested in it. One Town Meeting member asked if it could be combined with a triangular lot next to it until the Town Manager, the former Town Engineer, brought up a map that showed that it was extremely steep grade and probably inappropriate for that. More contentious was a comment by a Town Meeting member who said that, in her opinion, the Select Board has made some poor decisions in the past about financial decisions, and she asked that, made a motion that all leases that might be negotiated there would have to come back to Town Meeting for approval. That was a motion to amend the original article. There was some discussion on that, but that motion to amend failed. Chris Nixon asked about, would the town have the ability to put some public chargers in there and put that into the lease? And the Select Board, the Chair of the Select Board said that would be possible in the negotiations. And finally, a Town Meeting member made an editorial comment saying that it's time we put trust in our public officials, elected officials. A comment by the Chair of the Select Board was that if you don't like the decisions we're making, there's an election in March, vote us out. The Article, Article 10, to give the Select Board the authority to lease that small parcel of land behind 955 Main Street, did pass. And with that, Town Meeting was adjourned for the evening. They will reconvene next Monday, and we will be here to cover it. So we thank you for watching here at Wind Cam tonight. Wish you a very, a very good Veterans Day weekend with some great weather coming up, and don't forget the Veterans Day Parade is at 10:15 on Saturday morning. We urge you to go down there and see all the ceremonies for Veterans Day. So for that, we thank you for watching us here at Wind Cam, we thank you, the crew tonight, and we will see you again back next Monday night. Thank you.